Planning Board is now in session. Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a memorandum from the Board of Selectmen from Brian Shea, Chairman, and I'll read it aloud. With the advice of counsel, the Southborough Board of Selectmen is continuing the National Group Petition Earing scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 at 6:30 PM at the McAuliffe Hearing Room at the Town House to Tuesday, November 26th, 2019 at 6:30 PM at the same location. The Board will be postponing our November 19th, 2019 meeting until November 26th, 2019 in recognition of the planned services for our former Board of Member, Brian Shifrin. A revised agenda noting the change in meeting date will be posted. So, I learned on Sunday of Brian's passing, and my family and I were very sad to hear this news. We knew Brian here in town through, first, the first way that I met Brian was through baseball because my son played youth baseball with Charlie. And then professionally, I got to know Brian in his capacity as both an attorney and an appraiser, which is remarkable, remarkable achievement to maintain both of those practices professionally and work so tirelessly at them. And I think where Brian really shined was in his service to this town. He served on the following boards and committees. He was on, he was Chair of the Recreation Commission, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, Chair of the Golf Course Master Plan Committee, a member of the Community Preservation Committee, Chair of SHOPEC, Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, which I had the pleasure of serving with Brian on, and was grateful for his work, especially on the committee that I served with him on, which he chaired. And, and finally, he was a member of our Board of Selectmen. We're going to miss Brian so much in so many ways, and we really appreciate his work and sacrifice for this town. He worked very hard for us. So, thank you, Brian, and thank you to Brian's family. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for a moment of silence in memory of Brian Shifrin.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? We will now begin with the agenda items with one exception. We'd like to introduce to the town our new business admin in the Planning Department, Sarah Hacker.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Hold on. I have to push your mic.
Hello. Thanks, thanks for having me. Really happy to be here.
Great to have you.
We have a new, new team member with Sarah, and things have been going very well. Looking forward to great teamwork and more excellence from the Planning Department. First agenda item is a discussion item, master plan update. Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you. The Master Plan Committee held its community visioning forum last Thursday evening, November 7th. It was fairly well attended considering it was a cold rainy night like tonight. There are about forty people in attendance, including Master Plan Committee members. People seem very engaged. There are a lot of spirited conversations going on, and we look forward to seeing, MAPC took all the information to compile it for us on the input from that forum. We look forward to hearing back from them, and we're currently working to find a date for our next meeting. Anything to add, Andrew?
No, it was, it was, they had great graphics, a lot of data out there to bring people up to speed for those who attended, even some light snacks for those who came straight from work to keep them there a little bit longer, like myself. I think, hopefully, we get some good input from the residents, and maybe we can look for ways to get additional input if, if need be. But, agreed, it was, a lot of effort went into it, and it was, it was good to have
Anyone else on the master plan discussion? Anyone from the audience? Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 25 Marlboro Road, St. Mark's Dormitory. Major site plan approval. This public hearing was continued from September 9th, September 23rd, October 21st. And, a public hearing, 25 Marlboro Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, lower impact development continued from September 9th, September 23rd, and October 21st. I'll ask the town planner to give us the update.
Originally, the applicant had requested a continuation of the public hearings for major site plan approval and lower impact development special permit to the Planning Board's December 2nd, 2019 meeting. In the interim, we received a request for continuation and extension of a public hearing to the Planning Board meeting to be held on December 16th, with action by the Planning Board extended until December 20th. And we have a form here that's signed by the applicant.
So, based on that, there can be no, if the motion passes, there can be no discussion relative to the project. Any questions or comments about the applicant's request to extend the approval period to December 20th? No questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
Make a motion to, to extend the approval period for St. Mark's School, 25 Marlboro Road, major site plan approval, for special permit, lower impact development, to December 20th, 2019. As requested by the-
December, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
As requested by the applicant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion to, about extending the approval period? Seeing none, all in favor? Five to zero, thank you. Any discussion about continuing the public hearing to December 16th for the 25 Marlboro Road Dormitory Project?
I will not be here on the 16th.
Mr. Mills will not be here on the 16th. And you have not missed any part of the hearings?
No.
So, by continuing this public hearing, hearings, for site plan, we would have a quorum, but we may not for the special permit. Is that correct?
Are there more than one Planning Board member going to not be at the December 16th?
Mr. Stein.
So, there's a very strong probability that I'll be recusing from that matter, so on that basis, there would not be a quorum for the lead.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, don't we still need to get all the conditions written out?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's why I asked if you had missed any of the previous, knowing that you hadn't, hearing dates, so that you would be able to view the tape of the 16th and then participate if the, if the approval period was continued to a future date and the hearing was continued to a future date. Correct? So, 16th.
The next meeting is?
Is there, is, let's see. The next meeting is in January.
I have the calendar on my desk for 2020. I have to just grab it. Oh, you have it?
January 6th.
January 6th. So, is there a date near the 16th that you could make, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, as long as it's not the 5th or the 11th, but it has to be before the 15th for the month of December.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, after the 16th, after the 15th, there are no dates in December for you?
Correct.
Well, it sounds like, based on where we are with the project and the hearings, progress could be made on the 16th, and, so it would be worthwhile to continue the hearing to that point, and then see where that takes us. Does that sound, sound okay to the Board? So, no discussion, then we would entertain a motion to continue both hearings to December 16th.
Make a motion, we continue the public hearing for major site plan approval, St. Mark's School, 25 Marlboro Road, for December 16th, 2019, at 7:05. And also continue the public hearing, St. Mark's School, 25 Marlboro Road, special permit, lower impact development, for 7:15, oh, 7:10 PM on December 16th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. We'll see them on, on December 16th. And I will sign, based on our vote, the approval of the request for continuation and extension. So, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 5G small cell policy. I'll ask the town planner to bring us up to date on this discussion item.
At the prior Planning Board meeting on October 21st, on the agenda was discussion for the draft 5G small cell policy that the Board of Selectmen's Office obtained working with an attorney specializing in 5G small cell information. And that draft policy was provided and posted, Planning Board members, and on our website. And the Board of Selectmen was asking for feedback from the Planning Board members on their opinions, comments related to the draft policy. So, I received formally comments from Marnie Houlihan. I also received information from Jesse Stein and Andy Mills, and I was hoping if anybody else had comments, Mimi or Dawn, then I could put that information together and provide it to the Board of Selectmen so that they could have the Planning Board's opinion, either in a consensus or on an individual basis with the members individually, so that they can use that information at their Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss the same thing, the policy. They are interested in how this Board feels about that policy. If you would like, I can read the information from the Planning Board members received to date, if that's something you would like me to do, or, in general, the feedback has been that the most restrictive policy would be the one that would be welcomed and sought for the 5G small cell based on the information on the public health and safety regarding information that's been provided by Ms. Heidi Davis, who has brought this topic to the forefront to several committees in town. I also want to point out that I received an email this afternoon, this evening at 6:30, 3:00 PM, just before coming in here, from a resident. We received three letters previously through email, and one was Ted Davis previously, and again, he emailed this opinion. I can read that to the Board if they're interested. Otherwise, I've, I have this letter here. I did forward it to you at about 6:30, 6:40 PM this evening, so you'll see it in your email. Yeah, there's a second one. There was one that he provided at the, just during the meeting last, on October 21st, and then Mr. Davis provided another email this evening, also with the same relative opinion of concern for 5G small cell being implemented in the town without stronger restriction, or, you know, if there's a possibility to completely ban it, which I don't think, I'm not an expert, but I don't think it's allowed by the federal government that you can ban it totally from your town. So, the policy is drafted in hopes that, you know, perhaps it addresses some avenues that the town can use for jurisdiction to control some of the aspects of it.
So, thank you, Karina. As we discussed, as you and I discussed last week, the comments, you, you've consolidated the comments and are prepared to discuss them, as you asked if that's what we want to do. Or, would it be better to have the comments?
Individually?
Yeah, like have Marnie and, was it Mimi and Andrew? Oh, Jesse, okay. Would you prefer to do that? Okay. So, why don't we start with Marnie? Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. So, I just, I'll read my, my quick statement. So, I said, "Based on my review of the information and diligence provided by Heidi Davis, I'm in full support of proceeding with legislation and policy as drafted by legal counsel with Heidi's guidance. Clearly, she has taken the time to become an expert, and I believe that she is the town's best interest at heart. It is incredibly disheartening that the federal government is allowing this haphazard approach without the proper research and data with which towns could actually produce productive guidance. I'm not a lawyer and would thereby defer any legal subtleties to be addressed by counsel with Heidi's oversight. I'm in support of the bylaw and policy approach as the policy would be easier to amend should radical change occur. I prefer to be proactive, knowing that we'll be forced to allow the technology into our town." So, I would just reinforce that I would like to provide strong setbacks, notice, and hearings prior to application approvals, and ensure citizens that all antennas in town are at least within FCC guidelines. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to yours, Mimi?
I didn't provide any, but I'd be happy to speak.
Yes, please.
No. I agree with Mrs. Houlihan. It appears that there hasn't been proper research into 5G, and it's, that's very concerning, not knowing what the health effects could be, and these 5G antennas are, there are many, many more of them than 4G, so if there's an issue, it will be amplified that much greater. So, I would be in favor of the strictest policy possible. It appears that the, the regulations that were drafted address aesthetics but don't really speak to health and safety at all.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
I can't recall my exact, looks like you have it there, Karina. If you pass it down, I'd be happy to-
To read.
"Based on the aesthetics and public health concerns, I recommend the most restrictive possible guidelines for the Southborough 5G small cell policy. If possible, we should ban or come as close to banning as we can. Best regards, Jesse Stein." I don't know what else to say besides that. I think it's surreal that we even have to have this discussion. I think it's surreal that we even have to have this discussion, uh, based on the way these towers look. And, uh, they, you know, the, the powerful, uh, you know, whatever they emit, the signals, it, it just is baffling to me that we have to be concerned with, uh, trying to restrict these things. I do not want them in the town.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, um, I have the same sentiments of the prior board members. You know, basically, based on the aesthetics and the public health concerns, I recommend that, uh, the most restrictive possible guidelines be implemented for the town of Southborough for five G small, uh, cell policy. If possible, we should ban or come as close to banning as we can. So nothing more really else to add. Health concerns, um, being my top priority. While image and appearance are important too. I think the health concerns are the number one issue that I have and, um, for these towers.
Thank you. I agree, uh, with the rest of the, the board members. And I compare this to our next discussion item, which is the, uh, draft lighting bylaw, which is highly technical. And I th- I know I spoke at a previous meeting and stated that when the cell towers, um, were being constructed all around for the, um, for that technology, Selpro, um, indicated that they would ban, uh, the construction of cell towers in the town because they were ugly and they were, and it was, um, the, uh, energy and the health, uh, risks were uncertain. And of course, uh, we didn't have the, we found out later that, that the town does not have the authority to ban them, as seems to be the case here with the five G. So, going back to, I think what Mrs., uh, Latrell said, this is a policy. So, um, if we're able to adjust it upward and make it more restrictive, it's relatively eas- easily done compared to the, a bylaw. And if, um, if our language is unacceptable or our restrictions are illegal, then we're able to adjust the policy down to the, a, a point of still maximum effectiveness. So with that, uh, do you have enough to respond to the selectman?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Any more on five G? Oh, did you want to read the, um, that email from Mr. Davis?
Yes. Uh, so this is the most current email from Mr. Ted Davis, uh, received this evening, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty-three PM, to, um, my email address regarding the agenda tonight. Dear Planning Board Chair and esteemed members, I regret that I am traveling this week and will not be able to attend this evening's discussion on five G small cell policy. As I expressly, as I expressed previously, I hope that you'll strongly consider amending the current policy draft and review to be as productive, protective as possible for all members of the community, especially the most vulnerable. We must be stewards of our environment and should press for an environmental review of any infrastructure before it is approved. I wanted to share a legal decision that was rendered in late summer that supports this request. In August two thousand nineteen, the Federal Appeals Court in DC ruled that the FCC illegally eliminated historic preservation and environmental review and important opportunities for public participation for five G wireless infrastructure projects. Emphasizing the importance of such review, the court held that the FCC's attempted explanations for the elimination did not meet the standard of reasoned decision-making. For summary of the decision, please see the following link. HTTP, www.nrdc.org, court battles slash NRDC v. Federal Communications dash Commissions. And I can, anyone who's interested in that link, I can, uh, let them know if they contact me. In my opinion, this decision underscores the importance of the efforts you are undertaking in town to assert local zoning authority and hopefully toward transparency in asserting the right of environmental review for preservation of public health and property value. Regards, Ted Davis."
Thank you. Would that, um, email, uh, because it was read into the public, would that wind up on our website?
This will become a meeting minute document, which will then be, uh, posted alongside the meeting minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on five G? We'll move on to the next item, which is, um, a, a discussion item. Lighting bylaw working group update. Who do I?
I can give a quick intro and then I'll let the experts. I'll give a quick intro and then I'll let the experts take over. The working group is Marnie Houlihan, Destin Heilman, and then Sarah Heckar, new assistant in planning, um, who is very capable and super interested and experienced in, um, helping produce bylaw language, um, and research related to that. So, um, the three of them met, uh, last week, uh, at the library and had a good discussion. And I will let them follow up on what they talked about. They had a couple of questions which they might want to field here today, which were very, um, good, high-quality questions, I thought, came out of that meeting, so.
Yeah, so we met and it was a really good discussion in terms of, um, the new proposed lighting scale. We, in looking at the zoning map, determined that it would be, uh, very easy to implement the lighting, um, bylaw change across the zoning map per the, the actual zoning that's already laid out. So for example, the conservation areas would be a Z zero, so that would be a zero net lighting. And then the residential areas would be a Z one, um, the zoning map's up behind us. So that, that would kind of keep the, the lighting down. And then in the, you know, business, uh, village district and the business highway district, that would be a zone three. The one thing that we did discuss is that, um, the school, St. Mark's School, is in a residential area. So crafting language in there about being able to come before this board and apply for a special permit to potentially have, um, at least one area that was at a level three, um, for sporting events and like those types of things. So that was the, the biggest caveat, I think, that we kind of came up with in our discussion. Excuse me. We were talking about, um, bylaw revision in the sense of putting in some structured language and then having that allude to a policy that was much more detailed and much more flexible, so that we could make sure that we were always keeping up with the trends in terms of this kind of, um, lighting change. We also discussed, um, maybe having Destin do some more work, um, for the board if it's in the budget. And with my help now that I'm, now that I'm here, you know, to kind of pick up, you know, in terms of crafting that bylaw and then sending it out to him just for those technical revisions. So I think that's pretty much the highlight of everything.
Thanks, Sarah. And it's been a pleasure working with Sarah, so she jumped right in and it's really wonderful. So I think in reviewing the, the lighting, uh, bylaw activity, we really relied on actually what was proposed with the five G. And we really thought that was a sound, um, guidance, is to create a bylaw that is, is, is strict around certain structure, but then allows the guidance with, as, uh, we expect technology to continue to change. And so it would be easier to upgrade a policy versus the bylaw itself. So we had discussed for contextual setting, it's really important to have someone who's knowledgeable in the space, which that's Destin, to see if we might have some, um, hours in the budget to be able to support that. But not only just to do that, but to help us prepare for town meeting, as well as to train us, is how to actually interpret the, if the bylaw passes and how to interpret that into some of the, the follow-on, um, site plans that we would review. The other thing that Destin had some good ideas around were to actually potentially find, um, plans, photometric plans, to see if they'd be willing to, to try out the lighting plan as we're proposing, to see, um, what the, the, the flexibility in the new lighting proposal is that it's a totality of light emitted, not specific to areas. So it's how much the, the totality of light illuminates. And so we thought it would be really interesting if we could find either a past or a current, either someone who might be going through the process, um, to use their software, because the software is, um, what we understand is it's readily available. And most of the engineers who conduct photometric plans also have the, this, um, bug equipped. I know you were the one that didn't like the bug. The bug equipped, uh, oh, that was Andrew. The bug equipped photometric planning, um, totality of luminaires, to see how flexible and really gain insight from that potential, um, site plan. So if that's something we might pursue. But I think the team is really excited. I think we made a lot of really good progress. And if we can wrap it up and get it into this next, uh, twenty-twenty town meeting, I think that would be our, uh, vision.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
Thank you for all your work. It's great that, uh, it's coming along. Appreciate it. It'll be really helpful as we go forward with, uh, the, and have a set policy in front and that will be in front of applicants instead of asking as we go through it. So, thank you.
Mrs. Latrell?
Does Fussin' O'Neill have access to that software by any chance?
Fussin' O'Neill, I'm not sure, because they don't specialize in photometric, but I can ask them. The other question was, um, if Fussin' O'Neill should be involved with the review of the bylaw, seeing how they review, um, the plans related to it. And we could get some feedback from them. There again, I would have to figure out, uh, a budgetary means to do that. So, um, we have some areas of small pockets of money we could trade out for something else we had planned, whether it's a workshop or something like that that we typically attend. But I'll look at the budget and see what we have to do that. I'll ask Fussin' O'Neill, or we can ask, or even Sarah will ask Fussin' O'Neill if she has the bandwidth to, um, what an estimated fee might be to review, review a bylaw like that. And then we can base it on what they, what they think it would take, get some feedback. I'm sure they'd be happy to do that.
Just one more comment. So it's not like we're creating this anew. So this is, um, there are many other towns that have created a bylaw. I think what we're doing a little differently is just cre- introducing a bylaw with a policy. So it's not as restrictive. But I think the nice thing is, is that there are templates that we can easily extract and not generate, uh, you know, a whole new process.
In my opinion on, um, whether to use a prior example that's already been permitted just as a sample versus a new submission, um, if something changes and they've made their formal submission, it could impact the outcome of their permit, either now or later, it might set a, a strange precedence if the plan, um, of the bylaw does not pass town meeting. So I would recommend looking at a sample that's already, of a project that's done, because we have a photometric plan already and, you know, we kind of know where, we have more information on it, and it won't impact them. We're just using it as a sample. But I, I could be wrong, but... Just don't want someone coming down la- you know, down the line later and say, "Well, what's going on now? Why, you know, I'm putting up these lights," you know, so.
Thank you, you guys. Good work.
I, I had a few, uh, comments about the draft. But the overall one is, th- this is similar to, um, I think, to the solar bylaw that we did a couple of years ago. And if I remember right, the solar bylaw, that has bylaw language that is, um, that refers to regulations, not policy. So since this is as technical, if not much more technical, than solar, instead of the bylaw referring to policy, the bylaw maybe is better off referring to regulations. Regulations are technical, usually much more technical than what we would expect the town meeting to, uh, understand and follow, um, especially in the format of the town meeting. And the regulations can be changed. It's still a public hearing, but they can be changed a lot easier than a town meeting vote. So that's the art and the science between, uh, a bylaw, um, and, and the regulations. Giving the, the people a comfort level that there's a new, uh, restriction out there or a new, um, rule relative to lighting, but also giving them the comfort level that it's not a huge deal to change it. And it does require public involvement to change the regulations. So that's, that's my big comment. And, you know, reading through this, it's, I think it's, it's really well put together. I know, I think at the last meeting or the last couple of times we've had this discussion on the lighting, we asked, uh, to have the term "bug" explained to those in the audience tonight and, uh, those in the TV audience. Who would like to explain "bug"?
I would have to read it.
It's right here. I got it here somewhere.
I can read it.
Well, it's an acronym. Yes. Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm actually referencing accessfixtures.com. Hearing the words "bug rating" may bring to mind a swarm of insect or bad reality TV, but it has nothing to do with either and everything to do with lighting. It is an acronym coined by the Illuminating Engineering Society, IES, and the International Dark Sky Association to better explain how light trespass can be measured. The bug rating of a luminaire determines how much light trespass that a fit light fixture produces. The bug rating replaced the old measuring system known as the cutoff system around two thousand and five and is more comprehensive, taking B, backlight, U, uplight, and G, glare, into account. The B, U, and G of the bug. So, and actually, when you buy any fixtures, um, even you draw, going to Home Depot or Lowe's and you pick up a fixture, you will see the bug rating. And it will provide you the backlight rating, the uplight rating, and the glare. And so each of those combined create, um, a certain amount of illumination. And so what this photometric plan or what we're proposing is that all of, all fixtures have a bug rating. The totality of the bug rating is in a site plan. And then as long as they stay within their bug rating for the, the zoning that we've designated, they would be approved for their, for their lighting plan. Does that help?
Excellent. Thank you. The other thing, um, that is in the, uh, it's not, well, maybe it's in the draft, but it was in the note from Dr. Heilman, is the, um, the two terms. One is sco-topic, is that how you say it? And photopic readings. And it has to do with, um, the amount of lumens. Are, are you able to talk about each and then the difference? It's kind of in his, his note here. Says here, "Some light sources can produce twice the amount of visible light or lumens when comparing photopic information against sco-topic information." This means that our visibility is better than we thought with certain light sources, especially LED lights. There's a ratio of one to the other. Is that, do you know if that information is, when you go to Home Depot, if that's on the? Sarah?
Um, no, it wouldn't be contained like on the fixture. It's just a, a rating, it's a way of counting how many lumens. So if you were to go out on site, you could either take a sco-topic rating or a photopic rating. I'm not familiar with how each of those are performed. I'm not familiar with how each of those are performed, but they're a little bit different. And that's why they were saying that you get a different reading from each. And the best assessment of a site would actually take both readings.
And, and then they'd create a ratio.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I add just a comment? So just resourcing. They say light meters see light as photopic. However, with the color rendering of today's newer lighting technology, that is always not enough. That is how we have, we can have a lower FC reading on a meter and yet to the human eye, the area is significantly brighter. And so what the sco topic is really helpful in measuring like what the human eye is, as well as the photopic, what a light meter can read. Actually Dustin gave us an example, right? When he said in the old fixtures, a light meter could tell you how much light was shining down. But over time, that the, the light emits the same amount. But the light meter won't pick it up, but our eyes will still see a similar amount. But in an LED, it's exactly the same. So what it emits is exactly what it, it, that it reads. However, in previous light versions, what it emit disperses. And so the light meter doesn't necessarily pick up the hundred percent of like the light reading. I know I'm not explaining it as well as Dustin. But it's basically, I think, combined, it's a better methodology for really helping to appreciate the, both the human element of light reading and the impact environmentally.
And I think at the, when he gave a demonstration in the presentation, he showed an example of about a person or some object standing near the light. And you couldn't see the object even though there was all this light there, right? And then when he changed the perspective, all of a sudden the light glare was gone and you could see the object. It had something to do with that.
It's fascinating and maybe I will become a light expert by the end of this.
Any more on, on the lighting? If people watching aren't impressed by the work that the planning board members and the staff are doing on these items, the 5G, now the lighting. This stuff is really high tech for ordinary people. And so it is, it does seem very interesting and it affects all of us. So it's, I guess that's why it's on our table now to be working on this stuff because it affects everybody. And we, we would be, I guess, not doing our job if we weren't at least learning about it. And if by learning, realize that there's something that we should do about it, then we're moving in that direction. So I'm sure we'll be encouraged by future work on this. What's, what's the next step?
A potential budget approval for Dustin to be able to advance some of the terminology and to move to a bylaw policy. And then also I think engagement with town council and Sarah. It's a little bit of dissemination of work and who can actually get some stuff done. So Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm gonna do some more work on it in-house while we figure out how Dustin can kind of continue to plug in.
And I'll review where possibly, and then I will follow up with Dawn who, on, I pass by any budget changes before I bring them to the board.
Just one more question is, I think our timeline will be definitively regulated by the warrants and when the warrants open and close. So we want to be able to put the bylaw into the warrant for town meeting. So I don't know what that is, but I think working backwards, we would probably build a, a timeline to be able to get the work done. And then update this planning board as required. I think the other question is, you would have public meetings on the, the planning board calendar around the, the bylaw to educate the public?
Yeah, actual public hearing.
Oh, okay.
To be posted and advertised.
So we'll have to definitely work backwards then and plan accordingly.
There is a placeholder for that on the warrant.
You're about, if I remember right, it's around early to mid-January that the warrant articles are submitted. And cleared, pretty much cleared by town council to move ahead. At which time, if you're in mid-January, then you advertise the public hearing. You have the public hearing opens late in January, early February. You've got February and most of March for the public hearing and adjustments because the town meeting is at the end of March. So there'll be pressure to have this finished by early to mid-January. Karina will work with you on the money end of it. Sure, people will, like I said, would be impressed by the technology that the board members and staff need, need to have in order to move these things forward. When I first got on the planning board, a hi- a high-tech discussion involved dirt. And stones. Nothing more on that. We'll move on to the next item, discussion item. Site plan review by law. Which we have in our packet. Karina?
So as was mentioned at a prior meeting. Currently there's a bit of conflict with the town code and site plan approval zoning bylaws, chapter 174. As when you have minor site plan submittal, the 174-10 indicates that it goes in front of site plan review committee. However, there's a section in the town code that explains, appears to state that you have to be a resident to vote. So what we did is we're approaching the site plan approval chapter. And Sarah, who's our resident expert now on bylaw changes, came up with some modifications to basically eliminate the site plan review committee and put in its place the planning board. That would be the fundamental change. In the packet, you'll see the track changes. Let me just pull it out here. And again, I'll let Sarah explain the details of this to give you a better understanding because she worked on this directly. And then I reviewed it and made a few minor comments. But that's basically the gist of it, that we could eliminate this problem and move forward. And the me, the, the minor site plan review would still not be a public hearing, but it, and, and it wouldn't require a but a notification. And it would still allow an applicant with a smaller project that falls within the threshold of minor site plan to possibly have a, you know, a more expedited review process. Because it is a smaller project, no but a notification, it's not a public hearing. You don't have to wait the three and a half weeks timeframe that we typically do for public hearings to get to that point. And it would be helpful too because the planning board would see those types of projects as well. That are happening in town versus just me and the department heads, which is helpful. But I think it's an important thing for the planning board to be able to have knowledge of those projects firsthand. Cause some of them are very close to the threshold of being a major site plan and may even have warranted a major site plan in the past. But were somehow applied for under minor site plan. So Sarah, if you have anything you wanna?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, what we did, or what I did to start off was just to take out site plan review committee and replace it with planning board. There's kind of a larger section you can see on the first page that kind of details, you know, who the site plan review committee shall be. Which would be non-applicable if we're gonna be changing it out for the planning board. So that just was omitted. The other thing that kind of came up in this review is the fact that the current bylaw indicates the number of copies of plans that need to be delivered to the planning board. And that's kind of ever-evolving, excuse me, and going digital. A lot of the departments don't require a copy anymore, so we're kind of paring that down as much as possible. So we kind of re-crafted the language to indicate that the submissions will need multiple copies to be submitted to the planning board per the instructions of the application. Because the application instructions, those can be changed relatively easily. You know, you don't need to go through any kind of town meeting. So we wanted to make that, that kind of concession to make it easier to read and more understandable for people. We also, you know, in looking at this, there were a few places where the major site plan view and the minor site plan review differed. But they should be the same. So for example, you know, we added the, you know, all plans will be prepared to scale no greater than one inch equals 40 feet. That was only in the major. And so now it will also be in the minor. So kind of just creating some continuity across those two. The other thing that kind of stuck out to me in, in kind of a large way is that currently the bylaw states that the notice will be provided to the applicant by certified mail. Which again, is kind of a heavy lift on this side of, you know, the planning board staff. And it's, you know, much more functional and applicable to give that information to the applicant via email. So just kind of taking that formality out, you know, of the bylaw so that we don't get hung up at some point with someone saying, you know, you didn't give it to me by certified mail.
And that's in regards to incomplete or deficient application?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So. Yeah.
On that point, if it isn't sent by certified mail, if it's sent by email, couldn't an applicant theoretically state, I didn't receive the email?
I would think they could.
Would that not open us up to potential problems with somebody saying they never, they weren't notified of insufficient application? That could lead, theoretically, it could, and we can ask town council, I, I think it could lead to constructive approval of, of projects.
Well, this is at the very beginning before it gets filed with town clerk. So when we accept, when we get an application in, regardless of what it is, we have a few days to review the application and make sure it's complete. So.
Three days.
If it's deficient, then according to the bylaw, we're supposed to tell the applicant what's deficient, but notify them by certified mail. So it's not filed yet with the town clerk. That's, that's the public hearing process ticking.
Right.
I would think that it could be interpreted as kind of a bad thing to do, like to not certify, to not send a certified. But in the context, in a legal situation, if you, I would venture to say that if you show evidence that you corresponded with the person, they accepted the memo or the email and they wrote back to you and said, I understand, we'll be submitting this and this and this, that would show evidence that they accepted the deficiency, even though it's not certified mail. But it does leave it open to.
You can also put a read receipt on your email through Outlook. And so that would at least give, you know, the recognition that they did receive it.
But to Jesse's.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, it does say certified, but that hasn't been standard practice at this point, at least since I've been here and I don't see evidence of that previously. We basically prepare a memo or we prepare an email. And then we work with the applicant. Cause even though you do that, sometimes the information doesn't come in, so you have to meet with them again. You know, it takes, it's an iterative process. But good point. I understand what you're saying.
Another kind of small thing, you know, under section C, a complete application form, filing fee, multiple copies of submission documents shall be submitted to the office of the planning board and according with the instructions on the application form. So we kind of reworked that statement again and we took off an if any, there was an if any at the end. But there's never a time when the application does not have some sort of filing fee. So it just wasn't an applicable couple of words there. In D, section one, real minor changes, what we did was put in some semicolons and took out some ands just to kind of give that very long run-on sentence some breaks so that people can kind of interpret it a little more easily. And reading it through kind of, you know, in one breath, it gets a little convoluted. So just giving that visual stop for the eye really makes it a much clearer sentiment. This down at the bottom of the page in the blue, this was actually a question Karina and I came up with. So the actions allowed by the site plan approval are authorized for one year period from the date granted thereof. So in, this speaks to major approval. So should it also be minor as well?
Right, so how long does the minor site plan approval, is it good for? With major site plan approval, you have one year and then you have to request an extension and you get one extension.
For one year.
And if you fail to take action on the project, then you have to reapply again as a full application. So we weren't, we were hoping we'd get some feedback on if minor site plan would follow that.
These are the kind of nitty-gritty things that, you know, fell between the cracks, you know, in terms of having minor site plan under the review committee and major under the planning board, there's just some, a few inconsistencies. So trying to bring together that continuity as much as possible.
We could do a little more research, Sean, if other towns have a process for minor site plan.
So was there a, a, a time period for the minor?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
There isn't one indicated at the moment.
Oh, really? It didn't explicitly say?
I read it pretty thoroughly.
It just called out the major site plan in that section.
Yeah.
Although it did originally say the planning board shall act on a, an application for site plan approval and shall notify in writing. And it just generically refers to the actions allowed by the site plan approval are authorized for one year. So it doesn't say major or minor. But the rest of the language around this led you to believe that it's just major, related to major site plan.
I would think that it would be both.
Right. So we, if it isn't, we could clarify it in this bylaw revision. And then also what happens with appeals? Is there a minor site plan appeal?
Because minor site plan is not a public hearing.
Right.
Would we still want to make sure that it followed the same appeals process?
And is it legitimate to do that?
Right.
Something we don't know yet.
The current appeals process is direct to the courts, right? Because we eliminated that. Could you, I think that there should be an appeals explicit in a minor plan. But that's all, that's a big undertaking to go to court for that. Is that something where you could roll it into a planning board process then? It would be appealed, no, into a public meeting?
Potentially, or appealed to the board's luckmen. In some towns they have it. Potentially, or appealed to the board of selectmen, in some towns they have it, yeah.
No.
Not here?
No, we went through this when we, when we eliminated the appeal to the ZBA.
Okay.
No, there should be no other board or entity in the town that someone can appeal the actions of the planning board.
Got it.
We might as well go home if they can do that. They'll just go through the motions and go to the appeal.
Right.
It's also not a public hearing, so, um, I would think that if you go through minor site plan and you don't get it approved, you can come, you can alter your plan and resubmit for minor application to the planning board with a plan that may be better suited for the location, the use, the type, whatever's happening there, um, the parking requirement. You just come back for another application, you revise your plan and you resubmit.
The purpose of the minor site plan was to reduce the impact on the proponent. If you wanna have a small addition or a couple of more parking spaces, why would they have to go through the whole huge process of a public hearing and all of that stuff? Um, and so, if after we go through this, uh, these adjustments, we see that there's a reasonable, uh, cost-saving and effort re, reduction between the minor and the major, then it's worth having both. If we load most of, uh, the major site plan requirements into the minor such that the minor is almost the same as the major, then it might not be worth breaking them apart. When, this two thousand, I've said this before, two thousand square foot, um, is a big building. It's twenty feet by forty feet. I guess I never really had a problem with eliminating the, uh, public hearing part of it. But as far as the abutter notification, I think that's absolutely essential. The abutters should, the neighbors should know that their neighbor is planning to put in a two thousand square foot building or multiple new parking spaces. I think it's absolutely essential that there be a abutter notification.
For both minor and major?
Yes. We're skipping the public hearing requirement for minor. Because that is a, uh, a costly burden.
So, an abutter notification would include, um, not only notices by mail through certified return receipt, which is approximately just under nine dollars or so per a butter, but also publishing in the newspaper. It would be a similar cost to what we do with major now.
I just feel that the neighbors should know, should know that something's, uh, being proposed.
So, then what's, what makes that not a hearing? If there's a butter notification, it's published. Isn't that the difference between a meeting and a hearing?
It appears to be that, um, when you have a butter, I, well, I'd have to look up the definition of public hearing, for sure, to see what exactly that means and maybe talk to town council. But it's the only difference between major and minor, other than the threshold that triggers it, is the application fee, right, the upfront application fee, the engineering consultant estimated review fee. Major has the cost of publishing in the newspaper, which is anywhere from hundred and sixty to two hundred and fifty dollars. And then the cost to do the abutter mailing notification of the legal ad, so...
And then, and I think-
And the number of sets of plans. So, one is ten, technically, one is seventeen right now on the applications.
So, it sounds like the only similarity is the abutter notification.
There is no abutter notification in minor at all, right?
Right, if, but if we added it, 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 the, the minor site plan is not a public hearing, it, it therefore not published, and lower fee and lo, and less, fewer sets of plans.
Yeah, I think it's a lower fee, but, yeah, uh, yeah, fewer sets of plans.
I agree with the chair that a butter notification, do we required a butter notification on, uh, ANRs?
No.
Okay.
No.
We frequently do have abutters.
Because they see it posted on the agenda.
Or they see survey stakes next to their house.
Right, they see some kind of activity.
That's the notification. Well, I agree with the chair that, uh, I think that the abutters would be notified, including a minor.
Before I call on Tim, anything more from us?
So, we probably have to follow up, the planning department probably has to follow up with town council a little bit on, um, you know, the definitions and what constitutes a, a public hearing, what...
So, my understanding was the abutter notifications, the publication in the, the paper, and at a hearing, you're required to take input, whereas a meeting, you're not, although the planning board always does anyway. So, but I, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I, that was my understanding, though.
Um, was it this, the early part of this discussion, or was it, uh, in the other discussion where, uh, you were going to look at how other towns do it? And when I heard that, it's, those are like the magic words. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel. Plus, if the other towns have existing bylaws that cover what we need, they've already been cleared by the attorney general's office, and there's no problem with us copying them word for word, except exchanging whatever the town's name to Southborough.
Um, yeah, I, I think that that was in relationship to the lighting bylaw, but I agree. You know, I can definitely do some research into, um, minor site plan versus major site plan in some of the other towns and see what they have for requirements.
We did do a site plan review, which has, um, compares different towns to ours. So, that would be a good place to start without reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
And I think that Judy Barrett found that, well, she looked at ma, major and minor and, and found that very few towns had both, it was just a site plan review.
Yeah, I think her s, her study was more, uh, related to, um, the, um, who, who did the site plan in that town.
Timeframes?
And then it was really related more to time, the diff, the, the time difference between, uh, the application, the beginning of the public hearing, the end of the public hearing, the issuance of the notice of decision, and the submittal to the, uh, town clerk. And the reason for that study was to, for us to learn if we were the best at site plan in the Commonwealth or a close second. We wanted to learn how other towns were efficient, how other towns did it, and, um, learn from that ways to make our process better. But that is a, a good thing to look at relative to this also.
'Cause she looked at similar towns, didn't she? So, at least there'd be some towns to start looking at, and you know that those towns have site plan review.
Yeah, we could probably reach out to her and ask her in a quick conversation on the phone, too. I can introduce you to Judy, if you haven't met her yet. She's very knowledgeable, so...
Sounds good.
That's like an automatic, if you're in the planning department, you have to, you have to talk to Judy. Have to. Tim?
Uh, Tim Woodland Road. Uh, I just wanted to weigh in on the email discussion. Uh, email is not a reliable delivery mechanism, and read receipts, uh, most email clients allow you to turn off sending them. Most people who care do turn it off, so you can't count on that either. My suggestion would be that you treat email as a convenience. If it works, if you get a reply, great. But if you want proof of delivery, unfortunately, the good old postal service is, uh, the way that you'll get it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Anything more on site plan review? I think, uh, I think this is really close to the goal line, uh, with the, uh, changes that have been made. Especially, uh, it's easier to, to delete most of the time than it is to add. But, um, you've received some feedback from, from the board tonight, but it looks like this is in real good shape at this point in time so that in, uh, four to six weeks, uh, have this all, all, uh, cleaned up, maybe even reviewed by town council, and then ready to hold a public hearing in January. Yeah. Anything else on this? Move on to the next agenda item, which is the, um, FY twenty-one planning board budget. Uh, Karina and I attended, uh, planning board, a, a budget, uh, review, initial meeting with the town administrator and, um, the town treasurer on Friday?
Yes, Friday morning.
Friday morning.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, went over in great detail, uh, the line items in our budget. And I'll, if Karina wants to add to this, but I've, I've been to a lot of these meetings, even some where our budget, and our, our proposed FY twenty-one budget is growing. It, it's, it's not a level budget, um, they never are because of the, uh, the majority of our budget is, uh, salaries for the, uh, two staff that we have, and there's, uh, always, uh, salary growth or potential salary growth, uh, in every year's budget. But other, uh, other, uh, budget items have increased slightly over the, over into, uh, FY twenty-one. And I can tell you that, um, the meeting that we had on Friday had, um, more of an increase in those items than in some years in the past. And past meetings were, um, on the edge of violence over, uh, those, that bu, those budget item growth. This meeting, um, I felt was, um, well-received. Uh, there were great questions, and, um, there are additions to our, our budget beyond just the planning, uh, requirements. And Karina will go over those, I think they, they deal with the, the housing load that we're, we're carrying, public housing, uh, work, and, um, the open space requirements, and a few other things. So, I don't think I can remember having a budget proposed, that seems to ha, ha, have, um, be in line with what, at least the town treasurer and the town administrator felt was, uh, appropriate. Karina?
So, at the prior meeting, I had, um, ex, provided a draft budget prior to meeting with the town administrator and the treasurer, um, and prior to Sarah's joining us in the planning department. So, I had to revise the budget to update, um, those salary changes as well as, um, we'll be carrying, um, the cost of the Shopsey meeting minutes and a minor amount for, uh, Shopsey members to be able to attend some workshops, um, pertaining to affordable housing types of, um, information. And then also, um, we're carrying the master plan committee recording secretary, um, costs, which are very similar, and it's very important because open meeting law is extremely, um, crucial to maintain that level of, um, professionalism and lega, legality for, uh, um, public hearings and meetings and deliberation and all that. So, fortunately, we have Kate Battles doing, um, all three of those, for the planning board, for Shopsey, and for, um, master plan committee, which also gives us kind of a streamlined effect because the meeting minutes have all similar, uh, quality, format, et cetera, and the town clerk is, um, appears to be very pleased with the style of the minutes, uh, the format of the minutes that come down there. So, that, those are those two things. I also carried, um, um, uh, about eight thousand dollars, a little bit less than last year, for open space monitoring, to continue that program. Um, the first year, we did five locations. The second year, fiscal year nineteen, we did ten locations. Um, and I'm hoping that with the money, um, that we have, we can continue that with maybe eight to ten more locations. So, those are the changes that reflect, um, in the budget. There was a small amount for po, possibly a notary, um, license for Sarah, if she's interested in that. We hadn't really talked about it yet, but that's like a sixty-dollar item, um, so we carried that as well.
Any more on that?
Nope, that's it.
Any questions or comments from the board at this time? This is a, uh, work in progress. At some point, um, it will be submitted formally to the treasurer?
Yes, I believe they're waiting for that. I told them we would be meet, discussing it this evening, um, for the draft that I submitted. Um, I feel this is probably our final unless there are, um, some modifi, well, it's, this, mm, this is twenty twenty-one, so this doesn't impact what we are talking about for lighting. The lighting, um, services would fall under fiscal year twenty, any modification there. So, this is independent of that. So, this should be pretty close unless anybody has any adds or takeaways.
Marty?
Just curious, so when we do get consultant services, um, where it falls into miscellaneous contracted services, is that the line item?
Yes, typically.
And do, a, and do we have, um, as you think about it, is just the forward thinking? So, as things change, have we always kind of kept some sort of, 'cause rates go up with consulting hours? So, do we consider rate increases and also a pool of hours that we have flexible to us? Should a new technology or policies need upgrading? Is that something we traditionally have budgeted for?
Sometimes, yes. This is only my third budget, having joined just about three years ago. I can tell you, we're also carrying a, a small amount for master plan committee in that fiscal year, um, in hopes that, you know, the master plan will be, you know, final product, and that would cover printing costs for the town, because we do need hard copies of, of the master plan. It'll be electronic as well, I would imagine, um, so we carry that. So, what happens is towards the end of the year, if something isn't happened, or in the past, like, we've had a vacancy, we've had some additional budget free up so that we could then take some initiative and be a little proactive on some programs. Um, for example, if we, um, don't attend a certain workshop that we've slated, um, we could forfeit that for something, um, uh, for contracted services. So, there's some flexibility between the line items, but we try to stick to the line items.
So, you feel comfortable with what you've projected? I just wanna make sure we're not sure, being short-sighted, 'cause twenty twenty-one is in two years.
Mm-hmm.
And policies could change, 5G could come out, that policy might need updating, we not, might need le, I just wanna make sure we've included that type of cushion in case we have it, and i, is required.
Yeah, there, um, the, the 5G is going through the Board of Selectmen. So, I would guess that anything to do with that bylaw would come from a budget that relates to maybe, um, town council's review or the Board of Selectmen themselves. The other items, um, that we're involved with, like lighting or master plan or open space monitoring, that's, um, we can work a little wi, with those and...
Okay.
If we have a set amount and we thought we'd get ten and the cost went up, we might get eight inspections instead. We have to be a little flexible in that to keep the program moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we may not always get everything
No.
we want, but we'll get something out of it, and it'll keep it moving forward. And it, you know, time tells as we approach, um, the end of the fiscal year to what kind of flexibility we have. But we can always, you know, trade one for another, I would think, under contracted services, if we had- But we can always, you know, trade one for another, I would think, under contracted services if we had to.
We're an elected board with our own budget. We go to the town meeting every year and there's a separate, possibility for a separate standalone vote just on the planning board budget if it's not bundled with all the others. As we, as you know, when you go there. So we have a town planner and now an admin with great expertise. The town planner is the program manager for all of our programs and it overlaps into other departments' programs as well. So we have a program manager. We also have, as part of that program management, there's funds management. So when we get this budget, we expect the town planner to work with the board and not overspend. That's, that's, that's a deal breaker. We, we, unless something terrible happens that requ- that requires us to bust the budget, there's an opportunity for us and other boards to go to the selectmen and request more money. We haven't done that in my memory. And we take great pride in not having to do that. We also take responsibility so that when we get a, a approval for our budget from the townspeople, where does it come from? It comes from their taxes, it comes from our taxes. So we feel responsible and must be responsible to spend that money wisely and get as much as we can for the money that we were appropriated. And essentially leave nothing on the table without spending it on silly things. You mentioned the word cushion. I think every program, every budget manager would love to have a cushion. And if everybody has a cushion, then the, the budgets just get higher and higher. But since Karina has been here and even before that, we wound up in a situation that was not predicted, which was we had people leave and we had months and months of vacant positions for which we had salary. And so the salary didn't have a home for those months. And so that money became available and we were able to use it for, for consulting or other things. Well within the, the parameters of our budget. It wasn't like we went out and bought a pickup truck or, you know, something. Yeah, statue or something like that. So it's, it's every year and I, and I'm just amazed at the expertise and the care and the detailed orientation that our town planner has for the budget. That's really, without the budget, we don't, it's hard to move, move forward. And once you get the budget, it's essential that we execute the program efficiently and effectively. And from my, my point of view, and apparently now from the town administrator, I don't want to speak for him or the town treasurer, but our meeting went very well. And I, I think it's a great credit to the town planner to get us to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the budget? Anybody else awake? Next item on the agenda, other business properly before the board, planners report.
As usual, I'll try and make this quick. Okay. Currently, we've been, the planning department in recent past, and I believe even before, well, before I started, were posting the planning board packets on the planning board website under news and announcements so that the public has an opportunity to see what we're going to be talking about when they come here. In past change at town meeting where documents required to be listed at the end of the meeting minutes that were used, discussed and present at a planning board meeting or any meeting, those now have to be provided to the town clerk. Sarah and I spoke with Jim Hegarty, we met with him today, and came up with a plan that would align us more in that method with like the Board of Selectmen, the Personnel Board. And what they do is they submit their packet of public information that gets posted to the town clerk who posts it with the agenda. So that when you go get an alert for an agenda and you go launch to where the agenda is on the website, right next to it is the packet. You'll see that with the Board of Selectmen. So we are going to try and do the same thing because news and announcements was a way for us to quickly do it and get it up there ourselves at the time that we could get it there. But it's our understanding that, A, when the town clerk posts them with the agenda, it becomes accessible to ADA compliance. In other words, people who have to have it translated, they have software down there that translate it for people who, and Sarah, maybe you know better, there's two parts to that.
Yeah, so in order for someone who has a limited visual impairment, they typically need a software reader. JAWS is one that's kind of, you know, readily available. And most common websites are not accessible via JAWS and most common PDFs are not accessible via JAWS. You actually have to convert them into a version that is accessible. So what we're posting right now is technically non-compliant because people who have any type of visual impairment can't just go to our page and take a look. But if it goes through the town clerk, then it will have that capability.
Yeah, they have software that can translate. And well, this is something we just learned today. But in, 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 in all reality, you know, this has been a goal of the planning department for about a year and a half now because we, I saw that other departments were getting the packet posted next to the agenda. And we were always posting it up on the news and, which worked. And I think that people were able to access it there. But this aligns itself with how the other boards do it as well. So we wanted to try that and let you know. It doesn't impact how you see it or how the public sees it other than the accessibility and also where it's located. So instead, up in the top right corner of the, of the webpage for the planning board website, it's now down with the agenda. So when you click on the agenda link, you'll see, you will see the agenda and a packet that the, and then again, the idea is that's similar to if it's discussed during a meeting, those are listed as documents during the meeting minute and we can pull those and the town clerk has them.
So if it, the documents are posted with the agenda, they don't have to be reposted again with the minutes?
They do, only if they're present and discussed and, what's the third, present, discussed and
Called out by name.
Called out by name. So for example, if you have a document and it's on the website, in the packet, but it never comes up here at the meeting, then it's not a meeting minute document. It has to actually be deliberated in a sense, discussed, present, and called out by name.
Oh, so they need to be with the minutes also?
Yes, is the short answer. Yes.
Although, not to be too lawyer-y, but if you read our bylaw, it says the documents should, not shall. So they're not, it's not really a requirement.
That's probably trumped, trumped by state law. No?
No, documents are not required with minutes, state law. This is a Southborough thing only.
My question is, so we're going to rely on someone outside of the planning department, someone outside the planning department is going to be responsible for doing this. But they don't work for us. And if, even though they're, they may be willing to do it, if, if we fail to give them the information to post, that can be documented that we messed up and the, and the non-compliance is on us. If we give them the information and they fail to properly post it, if that's non-compliance, who is that on? Is that against the planning board or is that against the town clerk? And if it's against the town clerk, that's quite a, an additional burden for them. Is that the way it is?
We'll get more clarification on this, but I think that us posting it with the agenda is not us giving the town clerk the meeting minute documents. Those are two separate things.
No, this reminds me of my early days on this board. I think five years ago or so, maybe six years ago, I can't remember right now. But you might remember when Jennifer Bernie would be constantly pressed to post things, post the packets, et cetera. I don't recall it ever being any sort of law or regulation or requirement. It was, it was more of just a, a residential, you know, citizen request and, and a good one, but not one necessarily that we, you know, were required under the law to do because anyone could request this material and, and obtain it through the planning office if they really wanted it. So I'm not, I'm, I'm personally, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to be as hung up as we are right now on, on this, on this issue.
I can say that it, it was a suggestion by the town clerk to try that method and I had seen others do it. Not everybody does it. It was for the compliance, for the ADA aspect would strengthen that side of it. For example, other departments don't put their packet up at all.
Right. I mean, my takeaway from our discussion with him was that we could potentially, if we wanted to, forego posting the packet upfront and just post those documents that were listed in the meeting minutes.
We had a little part of this discussion with the town administrator on Friday also. And the comment was made that it gets to a point where instead of the files working for us, we're working for the files. So I would suggest that we do as much as we have to, to be in compliance, but keeping in mind that it shouldn't tip the scale to that we're working for the files. The files should work for us. And if it goes beyond that, then we should reduce that, that effort. That's my opinion. Tim?
So Mr. Stein is correct that it is optional to post meeting materials before the meeting. Those of us in the public greatly appreciate it when that happens. It's also the case that I'm the one who's been driving the town clerk to make things ADA compliant for the past two and a half years. And as a result, I've tracked his performance in terms of things that get posted, things that get missed, things that get redone. It's extremely good. There are, off the top of my head, there may be three or four instances where something was, was messed up to the point that it impacted a meeting, you know, where something wasn't posted or something was dropped. So I don't think it's a terribly big deal. And it's no harder for you to send something to the town clerk than it is to post it yourself. And the, the other point is the reason that you have to submit a document, submit any documents with the minutes, even if you posted them with the agenda, is that the records retention requirements are different. So agendas don't have to be kept as long as meeting minutes.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's no more on that, so we're going to move on to accessible sidewalks in the planners' report.
Oh, I just have a, really quickly, before you get to that, a couple of make you aware. The Board of Selectmen are having a volunteer recognition breakfast on Friday, December thirteenth at the senior center. I emailed everybody that in case they wanted to attend to RSVP on that. The date is December thirteenth, Friday, from seven to eight thirty a.m. at Cordoville Hall, the senior center. Public Safety Building, just to give you a quick update, they completed the median cut through expansion there for the circulation and created a one-way in and one-way out, which is signed right now, do not enter. And there's a message board there. Until people get more accustomed to it, it's already better circulation. And they did take the advice of the suggestion from the planning board to cut it back even further. And then they had the turning movement shown from the consultant. I don't know if I mentioned that last time, but that happened. Okay, so that's good. And lastly, I sent you a survey about Sudbury Public Access Plant Update. That was something that Conservation initiated. It was about DCR properties and how you use them. There was a particular Sudbury watershed area, I believe, if you wanted to answer that. The Zero Furman Ave Conservation restriction was submitted to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for that triangular piece that came through permitting, so that has moved forward. Ken's Food Sign, I believe, is still in repair.
Zero Furman Ave, are they open for business? I've seen trucks over there.
No. No, they're starting, we have a pre-construction meeting either Wednesday or Thursday. We have one with the one eighteen, one twenty turnpike this week and a pre-construction meeting with Zero Furman Ave.
Okay, because a couple of weeks ago, there were a bunch of U-Haul trucks in the parking lot.
Oh, well, maybe they're moving stuff around. I know that they applied for a sign permit for the decals and the, and there are no lifestyle signs, but for the freestanding sign at the front of the building where there's an existing sign now.
I haven't seen the sidewalk get put in yet either.
Nope, there's a condition with Framingham. I can tell you that
The one along the driveway.
Yeah, they, if that, they, they donated or were told to provide thirty thousand dollars in lieu of that to the town of Framingham to construct that or to pay for it to be constructed. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the one
Into the dra- into the parking area?
Yeah, it's along the parking area. Goes up into the office.
Oh, they haven't constructed anything yet. They, they don't have permission to start yet because they have to do all the kidnitions prior to construction.
Thank you.
Melissa Danzer and I are working on getting them to do.
But you can see where the town line goes through the building.
Yes. You can.
Part of the building with no signs in Southborough.
And pedestrian access, public safety. You want me to talk you about that? So, Tim Lit was kind enough to provide us with some information that he prepared for his concerns with public safety sidewalk possibilities, which were somewhat focused on the Public Safety Building to start for accessibility. And that presentation is in your packet. Do you want me to put it on the screen and let Tim walk through it? Or we just wanted to give you that information so that you could look through that at your leisure? It is on the planning board website for the public to view as well if they wanted that information. And my apologies for putting your email address on there.
Don't worry about that.
Uh, is this on the, on the agenda though, this presentation?
No, it's just
I don't think it needs to be presented.
No, it's not for presentation, just making you aware that it's there.
Yeah, because this is the selectmen's jurisdiction.
Right. The point, the, the, the thing, the reason, the reason I provided the update to Karina is that this has come up at this meeting before, a couple of times. So first, I thought you should have the update. The second is that what I brought up at this meeting in the, in the past was not the issue, the current issue that needs to be worked for that building, but that it managed to find its, it managed to escape all the reviews by all the boards and all the find its, managed to escape all the reviews by all the boards and all the people involved in creating the building. And so, it seems to me that it would be useful to think about, is there a zoning change? Is there a regulation change? Is there just a policy change in how things are reviewed here that might prevent this from happening in the future? My position is that certainly all public buildings ought to be accessible to everyone, whether or not you have a car. And, you know, maybe there's some action that you'd like to take to update, as I say, either the zoning regulations, you know, or the implementing regulations, or how you go about reviewing things so that we're not talking about this again. The slide set, I, is, was focused on that particular building. It's for your information only unless you ask me to say something.
I just wanted to share that with the Planning Board so they're aware that you made that effort.
May I ask Mr. Wood a question? Mr. Chairman. Is, is the Woodward School accessible to pedestrians at this time?
There, it is almost accessible. The, they have sidewalks that get from the front of the school down to the parking along the side of, of Choate Field-
Right.
-and across the street and then stops. My understanding is that there's a conservation issue in terms of getting from that crosswalk down to Cordovaill Road, 85-
It's accessible from Main Street.
...that the Main Street project will make, will get you from the driveway back up to Main Street.
Were you, were you aware that there is a pedestrian cut through?
Right next to David Perry's house.
Right, if you're facing the Woodward School to the left of the building, there's a walkway to Main Street.
I wasn't aware of that, but in any case-
There is. So if there, if there is that walkway, is, couldn't one walk from the Woodward School to the Public Safety Building?
Not currently.
Isn't there some-
No, there's, there's, there's a fence and a gate and, like I said, maybe we want to talk about this afterwards because I don't think it's in your bailiwick as, as, as a board. My concern is, is, you know, even if such a path were possible, how on earth would I put a sign on Main Street that tells you to get into a building way over here?
So, Tim, I, I just want to say that I have reviewed the packet and I appreciate that you put different options in there and everything. It shows that you are passionate about, you know, just pedestrians being able to get there. You don't, you clearly don't have an agenda that it needs to be done one way or the other. And, you know, the multiple pictures, the effort you put into it is great. I hope the Selectmen take serious consideration to it because, you know, I agree it needs to be there.
Yeah, the, the pictures were just to demonstrate that there is space and it's feasible and all that.
No, you did a good job. My point is you did a good job with the deck.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. We all appreciate it. But I think that the point brought to this board is, it is a concern that it was something that's not necessarily in documentation around sidewalks. If we are approving major site plans and how people access those, if they are public facilities, that they should have ability, or even, you know, private facilities, I think, that connect to public roadways, if people want to walk to work, that there's a safe way to go, to get onto their property. So how would we proceed to think about this as a governance for our board?
I believe after the site plan was approved, adding a sidewalk within the limits of the site plan would be a modification to an approved site plan, but it might be considered a minor modification. If it's beyond that point, then it's the Selectmen's jurisdiction.
But I guess the point is, do we have sidewalk in our, in our major site plans? We do not have any mention of sidewalks. So I think that my question is, shouldn't we be incorporating sidewalks into our zoning to be able to make sure we don't have this situation in the future?
A couple of things I can speak to that. In the past, it's the Building Department that handled ADA compliance issues and topics. So it was never, from what I am aware at the time I've been here, other than that, the handicap spaces are provided in accordance with the ratio for parking spaces and proximity to the entrance to the building, to be the shortest to meet those types of things. The other thing is, there is an ADA committee in town that is talking about compliance townwide. So, when I look at the site plan approval criterias, it talks about pedestrian walks including width and type of surface in a major site plan approval. It's one of the items. It doesn't specifically address accessibility, but there is an item there, number seven, under Major Site Plan Approval section.
I want to make sure we don't drift too far from the agenda.
Yeah. But that's something we can ask around, talk to other committees, get some feedback. Talk to the Building Commissioner.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Make a motion we approve the meeting minutes from October 21st, 2019, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mrs. Latrell?
I didn't even look at you. What was the day?
Twenty first.
Oh, yes. Line 21. She requested, "An at-large, not the at-large." There's more than one. Line 22, ZBAQ.
Oh, thanks.
In line 157, what's a shoulder season?
Line what, 57?
Oh, is that what that, so that's a real thing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, then, good.
I also want to just point out, under the documents used, I made some minor edits there to correct that. I'll show you what those are. The first item, that email was not used, and then the site plan dated under Chestnut Hill Farm was not used. In this first line. That was just an adminis, administer, min, what do they call it? A minor.
Ministerial.
Ministerial, yeah, that's it.
Scribner's error.
Scribner's error. That's not Q.
Mr. Mills, for those of us who haven't, aren't familiar or have forgot, what is shoulder season? What is that?
Shoulder season means it, it butts the peak season. It could be just before or just after. So if you're talking about like a summer rental, a peak season for the Cape rental might be July and August, and the so, the shoulder seas, season would be like the end of June, mid-June, and the beginning and mid-September into October. That would be your quote.
Thank you. So that is what I've learned for today.
And, I just, I don't remember that term being used. Maybe I missed it, but how does, real quickly, how does shoulder season fit into this discussion? The dinner events and educational programs?
Can I tell you? Because she talked about how they had a Mother's Day brunch and it was really cold in May. And she talked about how that building would, then they'd be able to have, when it was windy and cold, at the May Mother's Day brunch, they'd be able to move it indoors.
So on Mother's Day, it could be 80 degrees, but it could also be-
Fifty and cold and rainy.
Okay. It's one of those transition times.
Yes, shoulder season.
A shoulder season. Excellent. Motion was made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Minutes are approved. Our next meeting is, is December 2nd. Is, who, who is quite sure that they'll be there? Excellent. Four. And who's not quite sure that they'll be there? Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Any comment?
Are, are we going to have any response to the letter that the EDC wrote about this board?
I responded with an email to the town administrator explaining planning and Planning Board's effort in reaching out to the EDC to speak to the concerns that the Planning Board had during the public hearings, to which we, the EDC had initially come to the first opening public hearing, but when certain other issues started to rise, like the size of the building, I reached, we reached out with a email-
Late June.
In late June, yep, and, and asked them to please attend or provide feedback on those concerns and any other concerns they may have or support or whatever. Unfortunately, we hadn't, we did not hear anything back. So I explained that to Mark Purple in a brief email, and he said, "Thank you for shedding light on the other side of the..."
Okay. So, in addition to that, there's no evidence in any of the EDC minutes that they were in support of this project. In fact, in their August 2nd minutes, they voiced disappointment that, with the office building project, and said that it was not beneficial to the downtown initiative. And I attended their meeting on September 12th, in which this project was discussed. And I mentioned there was concerns about the building size and about the stormwater issues. And they, no one on the board voiced any support of the project at that time. So I just think it's disingenuous and non-productive for them to, once the hearing process is over, to then voice their opinion that this undercuts their mission and not during the hearing process, even though their input was solicited.
Karina and I went over the letter, which is addressed to the Selectmen, and thought that it was, the most appropriate thing to do was either nothing, which is, we did not agree on that. We didn't think that that was appropriate, to do nothing. But to simply share the email from months before where we reached out and asked for their input, which I myself would have valued in my vote, my consideration for the vote. The letter was addressed to the Selectmen, so, and there's been similar things like this over the years, the many years, and it just seems that, it's just putting on record the fact and the email and that, and that's, that's it, rather than starting a, you know, a feud or an argument with another board. Selectmen got the letter, they, they can handle it appropriately, either by doing something or by doing nothing. The record shows that we reached out and that's it. Anything else? Anyone from the public? Can't hide, Sam. Um, motion's made and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing that all in favor? We're adjourned.